In the sight of golden shores, oh there can be so sweeter than he ever was before. My heart is uncontent, but it comes for sweetly late. It holds me to its bosom when I drink with pride and grief. I love the Christ who loved my burdens in his body more. He said he was so sweeter than he was the day before. The paths cannot be seen, in the sight of golden shores. Oh there can be so sweeter than he ever was before.
Now remember, just before the announcements, the Moores are going to be singing, or they're going to be providing music. And then just before the preaching, they'll be providing music as well. No one asked me to. But that's just something you live with. Sure they have the agents here. I said that right now. Sure they have you guys here. See, Lisa's smiling back there because she doesn't trust her on this side. This poor guy, I've been in the project with my daughter since she left and got married, so just... Father, we love you. We thank you so much for the privilege that we could be here today. Thank you for Jesus. Thank you for the grace of God. And Lord, we just ask of you to please just fill our hearts today. I pray that you would just be able to service, to sing. And Lord, may it just be good to be in the house of the Lord this morning as we rejoice in one body, who are our wonderful Savior. We love you, in Jesus' name we pray. Hymn number four hundred fifty-five. Four hundred fifty-five.
I have the song that Jesus gave me, gives and comes and not gone. There never was a sweeter melody, tis a melody of love. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody with heaven's harmony. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody of love. I love the Christ who died on Calvary, for he washed life's sin away. He put them in my heart of melody, and I know it's there to stay. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody with heaven's harmony. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody of love. For me my endless need and glory, with the angels I will sing. For me a song with glorious harmony, when the horns of heaven breathe. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody with heaven's harmony. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody of love.
Hymn number four hundred eighty-six. Four hundred eighty-six.
My Jesus love is harmony, when I was lost and sin. My wondrous grace has brought me back to this holy land. The heights and depths of mercy are deeper than the sea, and higher than the heavens, I think shall ever be. Sweeter as the years go by, sweeter as the years go by. Richer, fuller, deeper, Jesus love is sweeter, sweeter as the years go by. He trunnied over me, and my strength will not go. The people come to bow him, his saving grace to go. He healed the broken hearted, and washed the blood to sea. And still the stream are girded in the great repeat. Sweeter as the years go by, sweeter as the years go by. Richer, fuller, deeper, Jesus love is sweeter, sweeter as the years go by. My sorrows and pain, for us they suffer loss. There without a burden, the anguish of the cross. When the saints beneath the glory, let us our voices praise. Fill him, let her, for your girl, with the redeemed praise. Sweeter as the years go by, sweeter as the years go by. Richer, fuller, deeper, Jesus love is sweeter, sweeter as the years go by.
You may be seated, everybody.
The years I spent in vanity and pride, caring none that Lord was crucified. Though when not he was for me, he died on Calvary.
I felt word and the facts like sin I learned. Pain when I trembled at the Lord I stirred, till my guilty soul and boring turn to Calvary. Mercy there was great, and grace was free. God and there was water applied to me. There my burdens all come with mercy at Calvary. Oh, the love and tears of an angel's land, oh, the grace that brought him down to man. Oh, the mighty hope that God has spent at Calvary.
Now I give you Jesus everything, now I declare you the best my king. Now where I've been holding on me, we sing of Calvary.
Mercy there was great, and grace was free. God and there was water applied to me. There my burdens all come liberty at Calvary. Mercy there was great, and grace was free. God and there was water applied to me. There my burdens all come liberty at Calvary.
Appreciate the Moores being here. They're from Passage Northwest. We've got to know them quite well, and we enjoy going out to Passage Northwest. It's a safe place, a good place, to send youngsters for a summer camp and for retreats. We've been down there, and you look at me. Man, she's got me just vibrating. What did I do? Those of you men that laugh with me, I...
Have you turned a purple?
Turned a purple? Well, sure good to have you. We've had a great time this week. Brother Joel's not only a really good friend, but we've enjoyed such great fellowship. And he's got a message that God gave him for each and every one of these services. And we appreciate that. That's what we want. We want to hear from God. And unfortunately, too many people just have a little three-by-five card. And if you go by that, everything's all right. There's no fellowship with God. You can be still married if you go by a three-by-five card, but you won't enjoy it. And we certainly want to have everyone to have a really sweet and living relationship with Jesus, starting with salvation. Now, a few announcements here. Brent has surgery tomorrow, and he has to be there at six o'clock, I believe it is. So pray for him. And Kami's doing better. She's had surgery about a week ago, but she's doing better. And so you pray for her. It is such a treat to see Florence here today. She would be here every time the doors are open, and probably even more than that. She's just not been able to physically. And we're so glad she's here today. And of course, each of the rest of you, we're glad to see you. Tabitha has some health issues. Keep praying for her, if you would. And I just want you to put those... I want to put those prayers before you here today. Also, you'll notice in here, we don't have an offering. We don't pass an offering plate. If you'd like to contribute to a love offering in these folks or the expenses, you do so. We trust God to provide our needs here on that. We have some missionary letters that came in, and you can pay attention to those. Charles and Mindy in Spanish work in Columbia Falls, and they have a new one on the board there. And we're so glad that we can keep up with that as well. Now, don't forget tonight, the normal service is at six o'clock, but after that normal service will be pizza time in the house here. You know, after... This has been three days. This is our third day. It's really hard to say goodbye to meetings like this. It's so good to be here, and so good to have the fellowship, to sing. And the last night, to sing, I hope you beat that today, but last night was incredible. And it's just because of gospel sung in your heart. And I want you to really voice that and enjoy doing so. But afterwards tonight, we'll maybe in the cooling off period, we'll go in and have some pizza, enjoy some fellowship there, and extend the service a little bit longer. But that's tonight after the six o'clock service. I hope you can come. You'll get some help here. You'll get some help, and that's what our purpose is. I think that's everything I'm supposed to say. It's good to have you, and we're going to sing a couple more songs. And then, I don't even have to do that, but just before, after we sing two more songs, the Moores will come and sing one more time. And you know what's his name here. He'll come up and speak after. Let's all stand again. Hymn number four hundred fifty-eight. Four hundred fifty-eight.
I know a ring bells of heaven, there is joy today, for a soul returning from the wild. See the Father meets him out among the way, welcoming his weary wandering child. Glory, glory, how the angels sing. Glory, glory, how the loud hearts ring. Tis the ransom army, like a mighty sea, filling forth the anthem of the free. Ring the bells of heaven, there is joy today, for the wanderer now is reconciled. Yes, the soul is rescued from his sinful way, and is born a new and ransom child. Glory, glory, how the angels sing. Glory, glory, how the loud hearts ring. Tis the ransom army, like a mighty sea, filling forth the anthem of the free. Ring the bells of heaven, spread the peace today, angels swell the glad rams and train. Tell the joyful hiding, spare and far away, for a restful soul is born again. Glory, glory, how the angels sing. Glory, glory, how the loud hearts ring. Tis the ransom army, like a mighty sea, filling forth the anthem of the free.
Hymn number four hundred seventy-three. Four hundred seventy-three.
Oh, what a wonderful, wonderful day, a day I will never forget. After I wandered in darkness away, Jesus, my Savior, I met. Oh, what a tender, compassionate friend, he met the need of my heart. Shadows were smelling with joy, telling me made all the darkness depart. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. When at the cross, the Savior made me whole. My sins were washed away, and my life was served today. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. Born of the Spirit, with light from above, if you God, gently divine. Justified fully through Calvary's love, oh, what a standing is mine. And the transactions so quick they was made, when as a sinner I came. Took the rehopper of praise, it improperly saved me, oh, praise his dear name. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. When at the cross, the Savior made me whole. My sins were washed away, and my life was served today. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. Now I'm above and more surely endure, after the passing of time. I am in future and heaven are sure, where contractions apply. And it's because of that wonderful day, when at the cross I believe. Rites of eternal life blessings, eternal from next precious hand that receive. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. When at the cross, the Savior made me whole. My sins were washed away, and my life was served today. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul.
You may be seated.
Looking back through the years of heartaches and tears, my Lord has never once led me down. Oh, I don't understand, still I trust in his plan, for he said, as his grace grew around. And there's no reason to doubt him now. And we'll make a way somehow. Saintly and this far, Jesus has brought me, no reason to doubt him now. How God had no fear, though your path seems unclear. Someday, God's plan will unfold. He has never, never failed. He was always revealed, my Lord is still in control. And there's no reason to doubt him now. We'll make a way somehow. Saintly and this far, Jesus has brought me, no reason to doubt him now. And there's no reason to doubt him now. We'll make a way somehow. Saintly and this far, Jesus has brought me, no reason to doubt him now.
Really good. Appreciate that. And I know y'all would like to hear the Moores play that guitar and that violin and have Pastor Burksfield and Miss Nora and Lisa and Jonathan come and sing. Can you go there?
Yeah.
All the favorites raise your right hand. Hey, all the poos, same size. Apart from the four that just raised their hand, most of them are. Thank you so much for all the kind you showed me since I've been here. I've had to do things I've never done in my life, eat a huckleberry pie and have huckleberry pancakes. Our, thank you for giving supplies for that. And stay at Tom's hole there, and I appreciate the invitation there, and just the kindness from so many people. And I've got help this week. They left two of my helpers left, I mean, just left. Your wife, I don't know your name or her name, you won't forgive me for that. But, yes, sir, I'm talking to you. Yes, sir.
Lizzie.
Sorry.
Lizzie.
Lizzie.
Lizzie, but what about now?
Every now and then I'll look back there. Sometimes during the song service, and she's just, she is, she is into what's going on. Put her hand up, you know, and then, is it Steve that sits right here?
Yeah.
Steve. You know, while I'm preaching, if I put my hand up, he puts his. It's been all, it's been that way in every service. And just a minute ago, I didn't even put my hand up, and he went, he smiled at me, and he did like that. I appreciate that. Good to be with friends. And then to have, is it Florence? Did I get that right? Florence? Florence, and it would be a while, and she's here today. And that's just, I know for you, that just holds as a special thing. And then I'm looking forward to pizza tonight. I think, I thought about preaching on weariness this evening, and then, you know, pizza afterwards, but I think I'm going to preach on blood instead. Two passages in your Bible. John chapter eleven, if you get that. John eleven, and then First Corinthians chapter three. John chapter eleven, First Corinthians chapter three. Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, and then First Corinthians chapter three. Now, if you are familiar with your Bible, then you know exactly where we are in John chapter eleven. John chapter eleven, we're just on the heels of Easter, Resurrection Sunday, where really, the majority of the people in America celebrate the idea that Jesus Christ, though he was taken and crucified at the cross, he was put in a tomb, and three days later, he rose from the dead. And we celebrate that. And then we find, though, in this passage, that Jesus is actually going to raise a man from the dead. His name is Lazarus. And the reason that I don't believe men heal people... One, I told you, my daughter had spinal bifida, congenital birth defect, had to have surgery when she was eight months old. If men could really heal people, they would go to children's hospitals all over the country. And children that had cancer and so many diseases and things in their body, those men would take care of all of their needs, and they would never have to pass school. They would never have to ask for a check. People would be so grateful for the life of their child, and that would be... So I don't believe men have the power to do that. I do believe that God has the power. And the other reason I don't believe that men have the power here, because they don't do the hard things. You know, somebody says, well, I want to help you with your, you know, your bursitis or your tendonitis in your shoulder. Here, Jesus is raising a man from the dead. How many think it's a little more impressive to raise a man from the dead than heal somebody's aching their shoulder? Right, right. So it's a great testimony to the power of God here in this chapter. And I want to read them just for a minute. If you look with me there, we'll pick it up around verse number thirty-two. The Bible says, "Then when Mary was come where Jesus was, and saw him, she fell down at his feet, saying unto him, 'Lord, if thou hadst been here, my brother had not died.'" Jesus, you've just been here. Things have been different. "When Jesus therefore saw her weeping, and the Jews also weeping, which came with her, he groaned in his spirit, was troubled, and said, 'Where have you laid him?' And they said unto him, 'Lord, come and see.' Jesus wept. Then said the Jews, 'Behold, how he loved him! And some of them said, 'Could not this man, which opened the eyes of the blind, and calls, that even this man should not have died?'" Jesus therefore began groaning in himself, coming to the grave. It was a cave and a stone bed on it. Jesus said, "Take thee away the stone. Martha, the sister of him that was dead, saith unto him, 'Lord, by this time he's stinking, for he had been dead four days.'" Jesus saith unto her, "I not unto thee, that if thou wast believed, I should see the glory of God." Then they took away the stone from the place where the dead was laid. And Jesus lifted up his eyes and said, "Father, I thank thee that thou hast heard me, and I know thou hearest me always, but the counsel of the people which stand by I said it, that they may believe that thou hast said it. And when it thus spoke, and he cried with a loud voice, 'Lazarus, come forth!' And he that was dead came forth." How many of y'all believe that? I believe Jesus raised a dead man.
That's right.
I believe he raised... I don't believe that that's some error in translation. I don't believe that's some addition by the... I believe Jesus Christ actually raised Lazarus, a man from the dead, that had been dead four days. And the Bible says, "And he came forth bound hand and foot, with gray clothes, and his face was bound with a knacket." Jesus said, "Then loose him, and let him go. Then many of the Jews which came to bury him, had seen the things which Jesus did, believed on him." Which probably will be one more time. Would help me not to say anything today that would hinder your message. Help me to say everything that you want said today. Lord, I pray you'd help me to stay out of your way. I pray that you would mirror the heart of those that are here. I pray you would help us leave today, having heard from heaven, not just from a man with an open book, but God, please, right on our heart with your hand. And we'll thank you, Father, in Jesus' name. Now, I noticed in the passage something unusual. Great story. If you're not impressed with Jesus raising somebody from the dead, you watch too much TV. If we were, I tell you right now, are we in Columbia Falls? Is there a cemetery somewhere close by here? All right, so if we were to go to the cemetery after service, I invite you to come. And I told you that Don Burks was going to raise a man from the dead, and he did it. How many of you think that people in Columbia Falls would hear about it before the evening was over? Right? I mean, it would be...
So familiar.
Wow. And then there would be the phone start ringing. Hey, I got somebody I want you to raise. And there'd be others who'd say, don't you come on my way, but I don't understand where they are. But I read this impressive story, but what I marvel, the thing in the passage that I'm preaching about today is really an application of something else that I see that I want you to note in First Corinthians three. Let the First Corinthians three. Read the verse nine. The Bible says in First Corinthians 3:9, and I want you to watch it. For we are laborers together with God. The Bible talks about how some plant, some water, God gives the increase. In First Corinthians 3:9, the Bible is very clear, you and I are laborers with God. I want you to write this verse down. I just, God just showed this verse to me recently, Mark 13:34. Mark 13:34 says that God has given to every one of us a work. So it doesn't matter how old you are, it, it doesn't matter how you've been trained, whether you've been trained secondly, what kind of degree you have, or if you've been trained in Bible college, it doesn't matter if you're male or female, it doesn't matter, whatever is true about you, if you're born again, the Bible says that God has given to every man a work. He gave you something to accomplish and something to do. And we're laborers together with him, we're working together with him. And that's when I go back to this passage, that's what sticks out to me. You know, it's amazing, I, I think you and I should pray, but it's up to God as him laborers. We can't make laborers, but God can. It's up to you and I to labor, but God gives the increase. It's up to you and I to witness, but it's not up to you and I to win people to Christ. I think that is a wrong teaching. You and I don't win anybody to Christ, God is the one that does the winning. It is my responsibility to tell somebody, hey, Jesus loves you, Jesus died for you, but it is God's work of taking and helping them to salvation, giving them eternal life when they believe. I can't do that at all. A pastor cannot give eternal life, can I get an amen on that? The church can't give eternal life, can I get an amen on that? Churches don't give eternal life, men don't give eternal life, that's something only God can do. But I do have a responsibility. So what I'm saying is, the Bible is clear that there is a work that we, we enter into with God, and I find that here in the passage. In fact, let's just look at it, look what the Bible says, verse number 32, when, when Mary comes and falls down at his feet, she says, "If you've just been here, my brother had not died, there'd have been a different outcome if you'd just been here." And then it says, "When Jesus therefore, verse 34, saw her weeping, and the Jews also weeping which came with her, he was groaning in his spirit, was troubled, and said, where have you laid him? And they said, him, Lord, come and see." Jesus asked the people, where have you laid him, where'd you bury him? How many of you think Jesus already knew? Where he was buried? Not even know where he was buried, he knew what time he went in. He knew what time the stone was rolled over the mouth of the cave. There's nothing he didn't know, he's not asking for information. When you're reading the Bible, Jesus asking a question, he's not trying to figure something out, he's already got it figured out, he's trying to help you and I to figure something. And so when he says, where have you laid him, they say unto him, Lord, come and see. So they didn't say, well, devil rode, left at the big oak tree, you know, about a hundred feet into the, they said, no, come and see. So what they did is they began to enter into a work with Jesus Christ. He's asking, where have you laid him? They said, come and see. So what they essentially did is they brought Jesus to where Lazarus was.
Amen.
Not vice versa. Now look, I'm glad that you're here today. In fact, I know we've got some young people that are not normally in service today, I'm glad you're here. You guys, I've watched you sing, I appreciate that, I know we have some guests here today. I'm glad you're here today. And we invite people, in fact, I think, I've run down, I think Miss Nora got rid of them, but there were some flyers somewhere that were invitations to come to the meeting this week, and we say, hey, would you come to church? Well, that's not what's happening here. Because here, there's no way you can bring Lazarus to a synagogue. You're not gonna walk into a grave and pull a man that's been dead four days out and bring him to synagogue, that's not gonna help anything. They're not trying to take and bring that man to Jesus. They're taking instead and bringing Jesus to him. And I think that's an important principle for you and I to understand in this passage. He said, Jesus says, where have you laid him? And they say in verse 34, come and see. Let me take you to him. Now, I love the story of Andrew that goes and finds his brother, that's great, and brings him to Jesus. I, I love those stories, alright? And I think when you first get saved, you have a group of people that you can reach out to, that you can bring to the church. I think that happens on a regular basis. Somebody gets saved, and you're newly saved, and the people that you work with, the people in your family, people you went to school with, all of a sudden you've changed your life, and that, now things are different, and you start saying, hey, I want you to come to church where I go to, and I want you to hear about this saint Jesus. Alright, that's a great story. Like the story I'm thinking of is where there's a man that is pausing, alright? And that man, that man, they have a burden for him, and four men pick him up, and they take him to see Jesus. When they get to where Jesus is, there is such a crowd there, they can't get in through the door. I can hear them, I said, excuse me, pardon me, please excuse me, and nobody's budging. What? You got, you got here late, you have to sit in the back. And they said, well, we got to, we got to, they go up on top of the roof of somebody else's house, and begin to tear up the roof. Come on, if somebody, if you go home today and somebody's tearing up your roof, are you gonna have some questions? What are you doing? You guys in Montana, I guess you could just shoot first and ask what you're looking for. Jesus is inside the house, they tear up the roof, think about it, they tear up the roof, and then they lower the goddamn. While Jesus is teaching, how many of you think it's rude to interrupt somebody else speaking? And this is not just any person, this is Jesus speaking. They lower this man down, and Jesus stops, looks at this guy, and he tells him to take him to bed. They got him to Jesus. And here's what I'd like to say this morning, this is real simple. You and I, you and I can go out to where people are, and we can take Jesus to them. And there are a lot of people that are sick, there are a lot of people that are in prison, there are a lot of people that are bound up, there are a lot of people that have broken lives, and you know what most of them are not gonna do? They are not gonna come to a church. They're just not gonna do it. They're not gonna sit, they're afraid of what's inside of you. They know that they don't belong. I have had people tell me, if I came to church, the roof would fall. Would you people? People, people are afraid to come to a gathering like this. We, we don't live in 1940 anymore. This is not an entertainment source for people. It used to be that people would come to church because there wasn't, there wasn't television, there wasn't anything else doing, you could hear people play a violin and a guitar and sing, and then you'd hear a guy get up and preach the house down, it was entertainment. We've got 24 hour a day, seven day a week news, we've got Netflix, we've got every, I mean, I can't even begin to name them all. There's Prime Video, and there's every, there is an endless supply of sports and entertainment. People are not gonna come to this place, a lot of them are just not gonna come. I know, this week, we got a good crowd this morning, I imagine, Pastor, would you have wanted more people to come? Absolutely, there could have been more people that would have been here. But the truth is, a lot of them are not gonna come here, we had a wild game supper. How many of y'all like to eat wild game? I learned to eat wild huckleberries since I've been here. I'm far, I'm far. But wild game, we, in Alabama, we would have a wild game supper. And at our wild game supper, we would invite the public, and we had a black Angus cattle farm. And this, this big, big facility where they would show cattle in the back, and all these really guys that had a lot of money would sit over here, and they would bid and buy and do all that kind of stuff, had a black and white checkerboard floor, and we would invite the community to that, and we would have hundreds of people come to that, hundreds come to that. And we would do two things, we would offer all kinds of gifts and prizes, so you could win, you could win weapons, you could win paintings, you could win grills and all that kind of stuff, and then we had really good food. We would tell them, like, bring your wild game, you'll get a prize. If you, if you have the best dish, we'll give you something. And my wife, by the way, Nora helped me one year win that thing, was she helping bake jalapeno poppers with dairy, and oh, they were so good. I mean, it was good, which is kind of awkward if you're the hope to get in. And we had, we had people that would come to that that would not sit, they wouldn't step foot inside of the church. In fact, I remember one year, a man came in, and he walked in and he said, where's the party? I said, right here, you've got the right place. And people were putting up their acroses, and we would have, we would have food, and then I would let a guy that's in heaven, a Marine from southwest Georgia, and he would preach for about 10 to 15 minutes.
Amen.
And he would give the gospel, and I still, I think back on it amazedly, he would kick to the end of that thing, and he would say, now, if you're here today, and you know, you know you're not born again, I want you to do this. And he would pray, and they would pray, and then he would say, I can still see it, he'd say, listen, if you trusted Christ this afternoon, I'd like you just to stand at your feet, and with amazedly, we had 10, 12, 15, one week, one, one year, we had 31 men stand at their feet. He said, well, did they all get saved? They all heard the gospel. And they said, they put, and I'm talking about big old men wearing camo, they, they had come for prizes, and they came for wild game, but they got Jesus put right in the middle of there, and got born again. And what I'm saying is that you and I, we can work with the Lord, the Lord knew exactly where Lazarus was. He could have just walked there. He could have said, you tell Mary and Martha to meet me there at, at cemetery. He didn't do that. He shows up and he says, where have you laid him? Do you know where he is? Do you know where Lazarus is? Do you know the condition that he's in? And when it comes to our lives, there are so many people that live next to us, that work with us, and if you just ask, we had, we had one of our waitresses this week, and I don't remember which place we'd eaten all over the country, but I asked her, I said, what's at the top of your prayer list? And she said, my mother. What's going on with your mother? She's got, got cancer. And I told her, yeah, my mom has cancer too. And it, was that a Charlie Nix? Or Nick, Nick Chalmers? This lady starts doing this, she starts tearing up the papers, I'm talking about my mom's condition, and then I'm talking about her mom's condition still in reference to her mother's name. I called it, I called it before the Lord today again. And we made a connection, but we lived in the church house, in fact, I don't even know why we're eating Nick Chalmers, because this is a casino on the other side. We, we weren't in church. Jesus could have said, I'll go there, but he said, where have you laid him? Do you know where he is? Do you know where your neighbors are? Do you know what they're going through? Do you know what their children are going through? Do you know the people across the street from you? Any idea about their marriage? Do you have any idea about the vices that they're tabled up in? And it's easy to live and just say, Jesus can go get him, and if he didn't get him here, then maybe something happened, but instead, he says, where have you laid him? And they said, come and see. So they took and they shortened the distance, and they brought Jesus to where he was. Oh my, that is not just a simple truth. If we can get Jesus to where people are, I'm telling you, Jesus Christ will draw all men unto him if he's lifted up. And it doesn't have to happen in church. I can't, how many times I've heard somebody praying, Lord, if there's somebody that's not saved here today, please, please save them. And everybody there's been in church for 20 years. But there's a whole host of people that are out there that need your help to bring Jesus that direction.
Amen.
You, you can, you can do unbelievable, we have a family, Joe and I turned to Alabama over a pie, not huckleberry, mine, you probably blueberry apple or whatever it was, but one of our, one of our members, a lady took her a pie, a homemade pie, left it on her step, she didn't come to the door and just put a note, hey, so glad you guys came today. And that lady said, if somebody would care enough to come and bring us a homemade pie, we would have been at that church. And her kids got saved, and her family got saved. God did a big thing, not because I was a great preacher, and they came and sent her to preach. God used a pie from somebody that came to their house, and tried to say, listen, we got a Jesus that knows where you are.
Amen.
You know, if we're working with the Lord, doesn't he get to choose the plan? Think of me right now. If it's his work, doesn't he get to choose the plan? So Mary says, if you'd been here, you wouldn't have died, and Jesus says, alright, I got a plan, where have you laid him? Well, why don't you know where he is, it's, it's been four days. Why, I've got a plan. How many of you say this? Jesus has a better plan than you and I have. How many of you think he's probably got a more complex plan than you and I can see? I mean, he's got plans, you and I, we, we can't even, I mean, I have watched God do things, and his plan, I would say that his plan is always better than my plan. Always. And he has a, if it's his work, if we are laborers together with him, we gotta find out what the plan is. What's the plan? He said, my plan is, I want you to take me to where he is. Let me say that, let me say that. Verse number 39, we'll start verse 38, Jesus therefore again groaning in himself, coming to the grave, and it was a cave and a stone lay upon it. And Jesus said, take ye away the stone. Martha, the sister of him that was dead, saith unto him, Lord, by this time he's stinking, for he had been dead for four days. In other words, Jesus now, he's there at the, he's at the, he's at the cemetery, he's at the gravesite, and he says, now, take ye away the stone. Can I ask you a question? If somebody could raise somebody from the dead, how many of you think he could probably roll the stone away? Which would be harder? Harder to roll the stone away or harder to raise somebody from the dead? He called out before, it's harder. And so they get there, and when they get there, they bring Jesus, alright, so now we're laborers together, we're bringing you to it, and he gets there, when he gets to the graveside, and they're standing there, he said, roll the stone away. Now, I don't know, how you think about that? I know that we, we live in such a strange world, but he's asking them to remove the obstacles. And, and I think, that's a big deal, to remove the obstacles? Come on, if I, if I were to ask one of you, Pastor, if I were to ask you, hey, you don't mind me, me down at the cemetery, I want you to grab a shovel and bring it with you, we're gonna take a, we're gonna pop top. You coming? You got one in the middle that said, raise it up, I'm coming, I'm here. If I, if I'm at a graveyard and somebody's been dead four days, and they said, look, why don't you move that stone away? For what reason? Something in there might get out, there's a reason they closed that. He said, now, why don't you move the stone away? Yeah, but it smells bad on the inside. And all these fears start coming up. He's stinking by now. He's decomposing, he's rotting. You want me to move the stuff? If you wanted to do something, you should have done something three days ago, four days ago. It's too late now. No, why don't you move the stone away? Yeah, but, but he's dead on the inside, we've already closed it up, we've come to closure, it's over with now. Now, he said, no, no, I want you to remove the obstacle that stands between me and that dead body. And here's what I want you to think about for a minute, there are so many things in people's lives, that if we were to stop and think for a little while, there's some obstacles sometimes that have to be removed. I, I, I can tell you, one, it's probably not out here, but there are a lot of people that have an idea, when it comes to race, listen, I, I believe with all my heart, the Bible teaches that there is the Jew, the Gentile, and the church. And we make such an issue out of race, God does not see in those types of things. But some people, they look at you, they look at me, and they look at, they look at Christianity as a white man's religion. It is no such of a thing. Jesus Christ died for the sins of the world. The world, that's why we send missionaries out. And how hypocritical it is of us to send missionaries out to the world, to go to peoples of colors and different ethnicities, and different races and nationalities, and then don't wait that they can come inside the church where we're in. I'm telling you right now, Jesus does not look at it that way. Sometimes you've got to remove an obstacle of race. Sometimes you've got to remove obstacles of vice. How many of you know somebody that wouldn't come to church because they drink too much? Absolutely. Well, you've got to have to move past that. I remember we were gonna, we were going out, um, um, we were out on a Sunday afternoon, we wanted to get the gospel every home in Ardmore, Alabama, 3,000 homes. And I had my son with me, and there was another, another young man with me that I'd led to Christ, and he was, and we walk in, there's three guys sitting in a garage, and they're working on their car, and it's Sunday, and they're having something to drink, they're drinking beer. And I walked in, oh, hey, Richard, how you doing? We're doing all right, and I said, look, that guy, that one guy, he's sitting there, he said, oh, we just sitting out here in the garage. And he took his beer, and he just kind of slipped right there. And you know, I didn't do that, I didn't say, you wicked thing, you wouldn't be doing drinking beer on my lawn today. I just started talking to him. Now, I'm sure somebody here said, if he's been drinking, he couldn't understand. So we spent a little while talking about Jesus. And finally, I looked at him and I said, hey, listen, would you like to say today? And he said, you know what, I believe my word. And so all of a sudden, a man's gonna drink a beer, work on his car. And he gets on his knees, and when he gets on his knees, my son gets on his knees, the guy that I'm with, everybody, everybody in the garage is on their knees. And this man got saved. Now, I could, I could have made an issue about his beer, but I didn't make an issue about his beer because unsa- unsaved people do things that they, that God would never want them to do, and you're gonna have to get past some of that. Listen, I used to love, we had people that would come in, and I, I haven't really seen it, maybe if you got it covered up. We had people that come sometime, we had people around church have tattoos all over them. They'd have all kind of colors of hair. I, I used to kind of preach against that, but then I found out seven, seven of all American women die of hair. So we won't start raising hands and give a thing, okay? I'm, I'm just saying, if, if all you see is that outside, look at him. Look at the hair, look at the tattoo. I, I tell you, there's a reason a lot of times I think people take this stuff all over the outside of their body, is because they got all kind of issues on the inside. The reason they manipulate, and they tape, and they put holes, and they cut, and they do all of, is because they're torn up on the inside. And you gotta be able to look past some of that if you really wanna be a help to somebody else. Sometimes it may be the vice, sometimes it may be religion. How, how many, listen, how many of you, how many of you were a different denomination, you were part of a religion before you got born again? Can I say your name? How many of you? What religion were you, sister? You were Catholic. What about you, bro?
Raised Catholic.
You were raised Catholic. Anybody else? Rest of us all Baptist. How about the aren't you that God's sake of pastors? You're part of another religion. I don't wanna talk to you. You, you gotta be able to get past all of that extra outside look that says, hey, look, they're not like us, no, they're not like us yet, but if we can take it, bring them to Jesus, and he said, you gotta roll away some of those, some broken homes, there's, uh, we could spend the next fifteen minutes talking about where people are. The, the thing that I think bridges across that gap is, listen, their race, their, their, their bias, their religion, their culture, their, their brokenness. All, all of that can be bridged by somebody that has a concern about them. Jesus is standing at the tomb weeping over somebody. Aren't you glad Jesus cares about people? I'm telling you today, Jesus loves you right now. Jesus loved you when you were Catholic. He loved you when you were Baptist. I, Jesus loved you when you were far away from God. The Bible says, God so loved the world, and love bridges a long way across all of those issues. Amen. But we ain't talking about God's love, we're talking about you and me. We have to roll away the stone. I wonder who volunteered? Think of me a minute. I won't, he didn't say, he just said, roll away the stone. You think he was talking to Mary? You two ladies, y'all gonna roll that stone away. Well, they did that to some of them, so. Or maybe not. Maybe they said, yeah, y'all go right here.
Peter would have done it.
Who, who stepped up? Somebody said, okay, I, I will step up and do what you're asking. And if it was meant, well, maybe it was three or four guys, and they all put their hands on the same issue, and they start rolling that thing together. They're working together with, can you see that right now? They're working together with the Lord. Now, they're doing the, the lesser part. They're rolling the stone away, but he's fixing to do the harder part. He's fixing to raise a man from the dead. And here's what I would say, if you and I could, if we can see it, if we can get it in our minds, that when we're working together with the Lord, it is his plan, but it's also his power. I, I don't have the power to raise the dead, but I do have the power to do something. We are both working. That's why I do not believe, and I, if, if, if this is contrary, and I know my friend believes, he does not hold to this. That's why, in contrary to anybody that thinks that God paid some for heaven and some for hell. A, a God that is, listen, the Bible says that he, that he paid for our sins and not ours only, but also for the sins of the whole world. God doesn't choose anybody for hell. And then choose some for heaven. That's not what he's doing. Alright? But I do have, I have a part in that. I can roll the stone, Jesus can call him out. And listen, I'd say this, Pastor, a lot of times if I'm not careful, I get trying to do things that God's supposed to be doing, that, that, that I can't do. And that will wear you out. That will wear you out. You've gotta have God's help to get God's job done. Listen, Lazarus is about to be raised from the dead, but those people have to be working together. They're doing their part. So listen, Pat, I'm, I'm, what are you doing right now in the work of God? What are you doing? Well, that's his job. No, no, no. What are you doing? If you're born again, what part are you playing in the work of God? What is the part that you're doing to try to help somebody else get free from the things that bind their lives? Now, third thing, third thing, I'm, I'm finished. I've been through it for four minutes. This is the biggest thing to me. Bible says, Jesus says there in verse thirty-nine, he says, listen, take ye away the stone. Martha said, listen, he's stinking. Verse forty, Jesus said, unto her, set thy mind on the death of thou wilt believe, thou shouldst see the glory of God. They took away the stone from the place. So this plural, more than one person working. And Jesus lifted up his eyes and said, Father, I thank that thou hast heard me. Jesus praised the prayer. And then the Bible says in verse forty-three, and when he had, verse forty-three, when he had spoken, he cried with a loud voice, Lazarus come forth. So they rolled the stone away. They carried Jesus to where Lazarus is. They rolled the stone away, and Jesus said, Lazarus? Come forth!
Amen.
And I believe Lazarus came forth. And but, but how he came forth? The Bible says in verse forty-four, and he that was dead came forth bound hand and foot with gray clothes. This is, this is me preaching, so it's my turn this morning. I think he's bound with, I, I, in my mind, I see like a monkey. He's wrapped with all this stuff, but he stinks, and, and it's bad, it's big, it's nasty, you know? But, but it was, but all of a sudden, now, this guy is coming out of the tomb. I, I, I don't think he did this. I don't think he came out like this. I don't, I don't believe that happened. I, I don't believe he, I don't believe he came out like this. I believe, I believe the guy came floating out of the tomb. That's my turn, so I, that's enough. I said, I believe. I believe he came floating out of the tomb. How many people, how many of you think that people that were standing there probably would have?
Everybody.
See, you watch so much TV. You let somebody float out of the grave down here in Columbia Falls? Jesus raised him, he gave him new life. Wow! Four days, impossible. Lazarus comes forth. His power not limited. The, the meanest man in Pulaski County got born again. And I got a call from somebody, said, I just gotta ask you a question. Did someone so really get saved? I said, he did. He said, preacher, he's the meanest man in the county. Later on, I got a call from him, several months later, he said, preacher, I just want you to know. That a boy got saved. He's different. He's. Lazarus comes out, and there he stands, and he's wrapped up, and he's living now, he's alive. You can see the, you can see the gray clothes worn. And what does Jesus say? What can you about, what's he say? Look at him. What's he say? Listen. You go listen. If Pastor were to raise somebody from the dead, and they're in their gray clothes, and he said, go ahead, go over and take them off. Look, if there's a man standing right there that floated out of the tomb that's been dead four days, and Jesus looked at me and said, hey, let's go take his clothes, take those gray clothes off. This is not my church, this is his church.
You do it. Go ahead, Pastor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I appreciate your enthusiasm. I don't know if I'd do that or not. I don't know, I don't know what's underneath there. I don't know what's gonna happen. If I was Lazarus, somebody reached up to me, I'm like, huh. We're talking about that man. But now he's alive, and so Jesus is saying, we are labors together. Jesus could have called him out with a, listen, could Jesus have called Lazarus out, given him a brand new change of clothes? He could do whatever he wanted to do. He could walk right out, and everything would have been just like it would have been if he'd raised him. And said, now we're losing. But instead, he's getting them involved. And here's the last point I want you to get. Listen, if you and I are labors together with God, sometimes what we gotta do is we gotta help people be freed from those old binds. How many parents in here would say it is hard to change clothes on a child? Say, uh, it is, at least you gotta hand up like, yes. Yes, it is hard. How do you think it's hard to change clothes on an adult? You ever tried to change clothes on an adult? Some of these kids in here looking like, no. It's hard. You ever changed somebody that had wet clothes? That's hard. That takes time. My dad, when he had Parkinson's, before he went to heaven, he would swim on a regular basis, and my mother would have to take him and change his clothes. He couldn't get them off. Four foot, ten inches tall, dad six-two, six-three, and she's having to try to take him and get these wet. It's hard. I, I don't know that it was easy to get all that off. And just because Lazarus has new life doesn't mean that those clothes have to be bought. If he was stinking four days before, maybe they stunk. Have you ever changed filthy clothes? You ever changed nasty clothes? These are nasty. You know, we have four children, and when my son was born, um, you know, we went through classes, we did all kinds of stuff. But when, when, when it came to his first, his first bad, that first victim, it, it was like three o'clock in the morning. And, and I looked at that, and I thought, there's him, no way. And so I asked my wife, can we get the nurse? And she said, I, I don't think so. I think this is something you're gonna have to do. Can we put him on the sink or something? It was nasty. It was nasty. And you know, when people have been drunks for twenty years, meth users, when people's marriages have been shattered two and three and four times? When kids have been moved from house to house to house to house? When, when there are people that have lives that have been wrecked, but they got born again, it is not reasonable for you and I just to think, everything's fine, now, everything's gonna be great. That is a theology that Joel Osteen teaches, and I don't believe that is it. Listen, that is not the truth. Jesus said, you gotta take those things off, so it's gonna take some time, it's gonna take some patience, it's gonna take you doing some work. And so they have to go, and they have to lose him. They pull those gray clothes off, and I think they put new ones on. Yeah, you hope they did. I believe your judgment. You know, a lot of time, we call it discipleship, trying to help somebody. We had a gentleman, he came in, and Jesus, I think he's listening today. He got born again, and he, he loved to fight. He loved to fight. Oh, he loved to fight. Had pretty good old hands, contractor. And, uh, when he got riding God, he came in, he, he came in with long hair. And of course, nobody would have said anything to him. I think probably most people, Frank say anything to him. Yeah, it was about that. You need to get that there taken care of. And, um, he sat there for a while, and before you knew it, one day he came in. I had to go to him, I said, hey, what happened to the hair? He said, oh, he said, yeah, I got the bug on my side, so I'm gonna cut it off. Had a man come to me, he moved California, Alabama, came to me, and he said, hey, preacher, I talked to you at the service. And I said, yeah. He said, listen, we've been coming for a little while, just want you to know that, uh, we used to drink wine, and, uh, after listening to what you preach out of God, we just decided we're gonna get rid of, we're not gonna drink wine anymore. Had a friend come to me, he said, he brought me a stack of new Bibles. He said, brother, listen, we can't come to the conclusion that, that King James Bible is the work of God. So we just wanna give you all these old Bibles that we used to use, and we went out and bought all the King. All King James Bible.
Amen.
And it just took time. It takes time. If somebody came in and they were tied up, could you be patient with them? If somebody had a broken family, could you be patient with them? If we wanna do what Jesus is asking to do, you gotta take those clothes off. You gotta help them. Now, we had the easy part, he raised him from the dead, we just gotta come alongside and help them. I, I'm gonna tell you what I believe. I believe there are a lot of people that got born again that are in cults today because nobody ever took the time to teach them some of the basic truths of Jesus Christ and the Bible. Because they got in, they got saved, woo, Lord God, show up to church on time, um, you know, make sure you pray, make sure you tie, get baptized, and that, that's it. There's a whole lot more to it than that. And he's letting them do the work. Now, listen, God's power is greater than mine, but they're partnering with Jesus. Jesus raised the dead, they're pulling the things off, that, that are, and, and sometimes I think we get so used to God's word. Um, how do you think, look at this verse, I'm, I'm finished, twelve, uh, goodness gracious. Let me see, verse forty-three, then many of the Jews which came to marry, and had seen the things that Jesus did, believed on him. How many think a lot of people got saved as a result of Jesus being raised from the dead? Later on, there is a big buzz when they have this supper, and it is being talked about all over the place. Look, I'm telling, again, if somebody was raised from the dead in Columbia Falls Cemetery, people are gonna be talking about it. Did you hear, there's a guy named Lazarus, he got raised from the dead. Can you imagine being one of the guys that rolled the stone away? Yeah, I, I, I rolled the stone away. Yeah, I, I was there, I rolled it away, I mean, it was kinda stuck a little bit, and we pushed it a little, I mean, we, we, we put a little bit into it, and we finally got it to move back, and then Jesus did. He called the guy, came floating right out of the thing. You mentioned, I said, oh, yeah, I was there too. I helped take some of those clothes off. I was scared to death. I was afraid when I started pulling stuff off from his face, that he would be out of, I was scared to death. But when I looked at him, he looked like he had perfect complexion, and it was amazing. I was there. I had a part. How many of you think they're probably talking about that, Heather? I would be. I was there. I saw it. Because what they did is they decided, I'm gonna labor together with the Lord. I'm gonna lead him to where Lazarus is, and I know where he is. I'm gonna take him, help roll the stone away, and I'm gonna help take these clothes off, because nobody's commanded specifically. He just gave an open invitation. And they got the benefit, oh my, they got the benefit of being part of the story, of Lazarus being raised from the dead. Oh, it is a joy to be part of the Lord's work. It is a privilege to be part of His work, His plan, His power, that I get to partner with Him. I get to do just a little bit. And get to sit back and watch what God is doing. I, I know pastors don't, I've been amazed to see what God's labor do. What He does to people's lives. I'm finished. There's a lady, bringing from South Carolina. Her husband was a military construction worker. Hard charger, drinking, fighting. And that man, that man had been repeatedly approached by preachers and other people to do, they didn't do the gospel. Twenty-seven years she prayed, and one day he's looking for his boots, and he can't find them, so he goes to her closet, and he throws the clothes back, and when he does, on the wall. He begins seeing these notes that she had written to Jesus about, please save my husband, please don't let him go to hell. Pray for him today, and beg God not to let him die before he gets saved. And the wall is covered with those notes. And he says, hard. And if I were to take you to Grinnan, you wouldn't see a guy that looked like a hard charger. He looks like one of us. He got suit on, he sits in church. He, listen, on his construction site, they ask him now to pray before work sometimes. Hey, if you don't mind, would you pray for us? Twenty-seven years, just working with the Lord. And then when he got saved, it was such a blessing. He recently just died, went to heaven. And I got to read a text he sent me about being saved. And I, I got to say something about that to you, and it was just a joy to God to have a small part in that. And I'm just saying this one, listen, we're not cowards, but we can't have the idea that Jesus just does everything. No. You might have to take him to somebody that would never come here. You might have to take him, push through some obstacles to be able to get Jesus to you. And then you might have to be involved in pulling off some old binds, putting on some new clothes. If you could do that, I'm telling you, you'd be glad you had a part in that. So let me ask you a question today. Do you really believe that God wants us to work with Him? Do you believe that? When I sing in that verse at the beginning of the, of the service, we are labors together with Him. Do you believe that? I'm not old enough. I'm not trained enough. I don't have the personality. I think He wants just to use you. And here's what I'd say today, maybe it would be good for you to get in front of God and say, God, can you help me understand the plan? What, what do you want me to do? Who do I need to bring you to? And if God could swing your mind? And if God could span your mind, it might be good, you know, I'd often say, God, help me get to that individual. Help me bring them you. Or maybe you've been working a lot of your own power, trying to get passive things, and you just need God's help in your life, for Him to accomplish what needs to be done. God, I want your plan, but I want your power involved in it as well. Because I would tell you, without God's power, we can't do anything, and I will get the job done, it's going to take Him to get the job done. But we get to work with Him. Or maybe there's somebody that's been newly saved, and they're been bound up, and maybe you say, God, would you help me just to spend a little time loving them, being patient with them, caring? That's the message today. So if you stand, you're feeling office open. If you're weary, maybe what y'all do is, yes, say, God, help with the power that you have, work through you. Lord, we thank you today. We thank you today for you, your invitation, that we get to have a word bigger than us, something that lasts for eternity, instead of something that's gone after a hundred years. Lord, I, I pray today, it'd help us to be able to see that Jesus, Jesus sometimes just want to be taken to somebody. Help us to love those people, care for those people, push past all those things that, that are so fearful, and move that obstacle out of the way, and then, Lord, if you do, if you do, earth them into the van, if you save them, God, I pray you take it, you'd help us to come along with side, and to friend them, love them. And I wonder, with your heads bowed, your eyes closed, I wonder, how many of you just say today, listen, I'm, I'm born again, Jesus saved me, I wasn't in the grave, and He sure saved me, I was dead and sin, but I'm, I'm alive now, could you raise your hand, let me if you just raise your hand? Thank you, thank you. Would there be anybody today that would just look up toward me, just look this way for just a minute, and say, I'm not saved? If you're not saved, would you look this way? Somebody just, just lift your eyes, I just want, I just want to say one other thing too, anybody like that today? All right. Well, Lord, we thank you for the day, Lord, help us to enjoy laboring with you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pastor. He's got number two hundred and fifty, that's the same that I love. Every one of these testimonies that someone got saved really transformed, you want to read, we rejoice about reading those things, but someone is one to share the gospel with them. Does, they're not looking for credit or anything else, but it, we, the blessing of the testimony that we got saved is wonderful to us, but what does it mean to you if you're not willing to take the gospel with you? What does it mean? Two hundred and fifty, first to last. Hear those horrible words, all hope will end beyond. All hope will end beyond. I'm so glad I know Jesus, and I say, if there's a doubt in your heart and mind, you should take here, and I don't know if anyone here hears this one second, but if there's a doubt, why don't you walk out the doors of a place where people care for you, and the gospel is presented clearly and simply, and you can leave your, uh, knowing that it went ahead when you died? I know this, if you were in that condition, and you came up and spoke to Brother Logan, he would be so glad, so you know, he'd say, I would be so glad, we'd rejoice together. And you see why he's my dear friend, and I flog myself after being a little casual about him, you know? He's my dear friend, and what bonds us together is our love for Jesus, the experiences we've had, blessings we've had together, His parents, His family, I just love this guy. Do something with what you've earned. Now, remember tonight, six o'clock, Liber Servus, I hope you can come, I know, I know he's wearing a robe tonight, and it'll be a blessing to you, and you'll miss it if you're not here. And all the beads is a great thing, but the thing is, the fellowship afterwards is going to be wonderful too, but come back tonight if you would. Uh, really, Lord, why don't you call us, Father?
Our Father in heaven, just thank you for this opportunity that we've had today to be here, to hear your word, Lord, to sing just your praise. Lord, we know that there's nothing that we can sing or hear, Lord, that's not because of you, so we thank you today for what the Lord Jesus has done. Thank you that He's saved us, thank you that He's given us new life. We pray, Lord, help us to have a heart in giving new life to others, Lord. We pray that you would do this, that you would receive all honor and glory, and it's in the Lord Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. And before you go, listen, tonight, tonight, if I preach on weirdness, I promise you, I'm, I'm going to be flying out in the morning at five forty-five, so I think I've got to get up around three forty-five, so it won't be a very long service, because I really can't preach a long message about weirdness. But I want you to do this, what I said today, get you a three by five card, and write names of a few people that you'd like to work together with the Lord on reaching. I've done this throughout my ministry the last several years, and they can be lost, they can be backslid, they can be broken, pray for them every day, and every now and then, shoot a text, give them a phone call, go by and see them, not, not every week, maybe every other week, and I can't tell you how many times God has taken and honored doing that. So I just said, get a little free by five card, this card, by the way, has got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight names on it. And you know the little bell that rings on your phone when somebody texts you or whatever, you know, you get a hit of dopamine from that? If you cross somebody's name off the list that you've been praying for, that got saved, that got injured?
That's good.
You talk about a hit of dopamine, I've kept cards that had names on it, so just write it down, say, God, who can I work with? All right, God bless you, we just finished.